Hey everybody, thank you so much for coming tonight. My name is Casey Daniels, the prettier half of the Kendall and Casey Show on 93 WIBC. Glad you got that. So Charles invited me to come out and introduce him tonight, and it's my pleasure to do that. This is going to be the 11th town hall meeting that Charles has had over the past couple of months, and the first one to be livestreamed, so hello if you're watching. And they wanted to give this town hall meeting a title, and it's defund the ATF. Yeah. And that's because places like Premier Arms are being attacked by the Biden administration, and Charles definitely believes that the ATF is one of the worst government agencies, and he wants to defund it and get rid of it. Thank you Bryce, by the way, for having us, we really appreciate that. And thank you guys for coming here and allowing us to spend some time with you this evening. So let me tell you just a little bit about Charles Bookwalter. He's the only Green Beret to run for Congress in Indiana in recent years, perhaps ever. Ever? Yeah, yeah. So this is a man, obviously, who's very passionate about his country. He's on course to challenge Jim Baird in the 4th Congressional District. The primary, by the way, is when? Very good, May 7th, you guys are paying attention. It's going to be the first time that Congressman Baird has had a challenger. The first time in six years that the voters of the 4th District are going to have a choice between their candidates, and it's a good choice that they get to make with Charles Bookwalter. So he lives in Boone County with his wife and his three daughters. I'm sure they're part of the reason why he's running for Congress. He's served in the US Army Special Forces for almost a decade, reached the rank of Senior Medical Sergeant, did two tours of combat, we thank you very much for that. First one was in Afghanistan. My brother was there, I'll have to ask him if he knows you. Also, big place, right, a lot of sand. The second tour that Charles did was in the Philippines. He was awarded the Bronze Star for meritorious service in combat. Charles announced that, yeah. Amazing. Charles announced that he was going to run on May 21st, and his platform is to defund the deep state, end the endless wars, make massive cuts in federal spending, up top, yes, yes. Protect medical liberty and the right of Americans to inform consent and secure elections by returning to voting on Election Day only on paper ballots. That's amazing. So on WIBC, Rob and I have the opportunity to speak to a lot of different people. People say, hey, you should talk to this person, you should interview this person often. And when, and I asked Rob if he could remember who said, hey, you should talk with Charles Bookwalter. Rob couldn't remember, I couldn't remember who said that we should talk to you. But it was kind of like, okay, so we knew nothing about Charles, and he was new on the political scene. And so when we were in the studio getting to, ready to do the interview, Rob said, you know, I've not talked to Charles, this could be great, it could totally bomb, just go with it. Thought, okay, that's what we're going to do, be ready for anything. And when we first dialed Charles, we were having some technical problems on his end. And it was one of those situations where we could hear him, but he couldn't hear us. Hello, hello, yeah, hello? Okay, we hung up the phone, called back, second time. You could hear us, but we couldn't hear you. And again, hello, I'm here, hello, I'm here. And Rob and I are like, oh boy, what have we gotten ourselves into? Yeah, like what is this guy all about? Third time's the charm, we finally got a good connection, and then Charles started talking. And Rob and I looked at each other through the window in the studio, and you could tell, we were both like, who is this guy? This is amazing. And everything he was saying, we couldn't believe, and we just, you could tell we were just getting more and more excited. And I actually said something to Charles on the, during the interview that we never say, and that was, dude, I hope you're for real, because if you're not, there's going to be a lot of heartbroken people. Yeah, and as time has gone on, we have found, yeah, he's for real. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you the next Congressman from the 4th District, Charles Bookwalter.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, it's very kind of you, very kind. And like Casey, I'm not a politician, so I have notes too. To keep me on track, for one, I'm not a politician, that means I've never lied to you, I've never voted to fund the ATF to oppress you, I've never voted to take away your rights. Tim, is this mic working okay? Yep. Okay, yeah, oh, that's better, yep, that better for everybody? Okay. We do have other people running for office who've been elected here in the room. Cheryl Hancock's here, was recently elected up in, in Whitestown. Travis Crane is running for a judge here, in what, in what district? Yep, yep, thank you very much Travis, and we go to a lot of the same events together. Anybody else that's a patriot, that's a liberty candidate running for office? No? I'd like to introduce John Schrock in the back, he's with the John Birch Society, he and I do a lot of events together up in the 4th Congressional District, that involves fighting back against the Green New Deal, which is a big problem up there with carbon sequestration, solar farms, wind turbines, and all that that's going up there. So John and I work together on a lot of these things, and I think you should, if you're interested in that, he's got a card and you can meet with John. Thanks for coming tonight, John. So the reason that we said that this is a defund the ATF is because when we were doing those 10 town hall meetings and scheduling them, we came here to Premier to schedule one. And in the conversation that we, I had with an associate here, he started telling me about some of his experiences recently with the ATF, which was confirmed here tonight with Bryce, and it's gotten really bad over the last few years. More of like an adversarial relationship, almost a game for them to try to shut down FFLs and gun shops, yeah. And, you know, and that kind of encouraged us to have not just a town hall, but a town hall also related to ATF. But of course, for my entire adult life, I've been conservative, constitutionalist, and a patriot, that's not the first I've heard of the ATF. You know, I was around when Waco happened in Ruby Ridge, and all those abuses of the ATF that occurred. And so we're all aware of a lot of these, Fast and Furious and whatnot, so that's, that's one of the reasons that we're doing this. But at the same time, it's a town hall, and a lot of times I get a lot of the same questions, and many of you have been to a town hall, you're going to hear some of the same stuff and repeat, but I want to take the first few minutes to introduce myself to people that haven't met me before, who I am, why I'm running, because that's a lot of times where I'm from, what I do, those are a lot of times the first questions that I get, we're streaming it so other people can hear that too. But we, and what the district is, the 4th Congressional District, as Casey mentioned, is a big district, and it's R+18. So that means that, that the primary is the election, and we haven't had an opportunity to decide who our Congressman is in the last two elections, because the Republican Party has removed the primary challenger from the ballot. And when that happens, it means that we don't have a choice, the primary is the election, right? So in the 4th Congressional District, I live in Boone County with my wife and, and three daughters, and we 3H, we homestead, homeschool, and home church. So we have a 30-acre homestead where we have raised bees, there's another beekeeper over here. We have raised meat birds and rabbits and pigs, and my wife produces, she's a green thumb, and we produce our own food in can, and, and we prep, and do all those kinds of fun things out on a, on our homestead. We also homeschool, so my wife is involved in Boone County Christian homeschool organizations and co-ops, and, and as a Special Forces medic, I teach my girls anatomy and physiology, for example, and other things that I've learned throughout my life, like shooting. And so I'm proud, a father, to tell you that my three daughters, 8'8" and 7', can hit steel at 60 yards with a 10.22 with iron sights, you can clap for that if you, yeah, yeah, that's right. And, and we home church as well, which means I believe that church starts at home, but my wife and I also are small group leaders at our church, at Lebanon Christian Church. So I grew up in Vermillion County, Indiana, on the west side of the state, graduated from Indiana University, from the School of Public and Environmental Affairs. But to graduate, you had to do a internship, so I did mine at the Pentagon in 1999, returned to IU to, to graduate, and that's when 9/11 happened. Well, that changed a lot for me, like many of you probably changed what, the direction of your lives. I was in the Indiana National Guard at the time, and I decided I wanted to go active duty and serve my country and fight for my country, but it was difficult to get in. If some of you remember, after 9/11, everybody was trying to get in the military. So it took me until 2006 to finally get in or matriculate into the Army. So I entered directly into the Army Special Forces Pipeline, took me three years to graduate and earn a Green Beret, because I was a medic on a detachment, and that's a 52-week training course, and I got Mandarin Chinese. So that's a six-month learning, a course, and then the other year and a half of that was what we all, how many SF guys and Navy SEALs do we have in here? We got two, three in here? Yeah, yeah. How many military guys do we have in here total? How many military personnel do we have in here? Yep, yep, alright, yeah, thank you. So that other year and a half is what we call the suck, and that was the other year and a half. And so then I served in the Army Special Forces for about 10 years, I did two combat deployments, earned a Bronze Star for service, but I never intended for that to be a career. So in 2012, we returned here to Indiana, and in 2014 is when I moved up to Boone County to homestead and, and prep, as many of you probably do yourselves. And I was able to use that experience in the, in the military as a medic, to leverage that into a good job. So I was a medical device sales rep for the last seven years of my career for Intuitive Surgical, the manufacturer of the DaVinci robot. So my job was in and out of the operating room, training surgeons on how to do surgical, surgery on the, on the surgical robot, also in the C-suite, trying to convince CEOs and COOs why robotic surgery is better than laparoscopic or open surgery, and why they needed to buy not one, not two, not three, but four more $2 million robots for their, for their hospital system. But that's debatable, I don't work for Intuitive anymore, but that is something that was sold for a long time. But I could, I'm still sharp on robotic surgery, and I could get into a debate right now if you wanted to. So that job was a great experience, it opened up some financial opportunities for me to invest. So my, a friend and I built some commercial real estate in Boone County, Indiana, Frankfurt, and then my brother and I bought a Jimmy John's franchise. And I'm telling you all this for a reason. One is to talk a little bit about my resume and some of the experiences I've had from saving capital and building commercial real estate, negotiating contracts with surgeons and CEOs, and working for, as an executive sales rep, buying a franchise, managing a small business, managing employees, doing payroll. My partner and I, we negotiated all those commercial real estate leases with all these big, large national companies. But also to give you an idea of the position that I was in when COVID hit us, and more importantly, the overreaction to COVID from the state. And so I wanted to paint that picture, because at that time is when I kind of started looking around in our supermajority, so-called conservative Republican state, thinking, where is my Republican conservative leadership that should be standing up for us when, when this is going down? But your Congressman did not do anything during that time. Your Congressman did not stand outside of businesses and say, you do not need, you cannot lock this business down, or stand outside of businesses and say, you do not have to mask your employees, your Congressman didn't do anything. And if you all remember, no elected representative in Indiana did anything for us during that time. And you have to remember that as you move forward and vote in the future. And, and I also want to show you this, the difference between the two, what I did when that occurred. So one, I lost my job, I resigned because I did not want to get vaccinated at 44 years old, so I walked, yeah, I walked, many of you did, and I know many of you are in the same situation, I'll wrap this up because I know we want to get going, many of you were in the same situation. But I walked away from that career, I'll never be in healthcare sales again. I did not mask my employees, I did not put those six-foot stickers in my store, I did not separate my chairs, I did not do any of that, I let my employees choose what, how they wanted to work in our establishment. When the Health Department called me, I told them that they could tell people that are complaining to go to Arnie's or some other sandwich shop, okay? You can go somewhere else, that's how you handle it, this is our business, and you're not going to tell me how to run it. So we stood up against them, you can clap Jenny, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. But that's the difference, you know, that's the difference, and you need to be aware of that when, when we start, when we go to the polls and we start looking at who's going to elect us, you know, did you have, did they have to spy and to stand up? We already know the answer is no. But there's going to be a lot of other people that are going to jump on the bandwagon and say, oh, well, the masking was wrong. Well, what did they do at the time, right? What did they do during the time? And it is on record, I can show you that we, that we did this. And now my Jimmy John's is nearly a million-dollar store in Frankfurt, and I think it's because the entire community knows that they could go to Jimmy John's like it was 2019, they could sit with their buddies, they didn't have to wear a mask, the owner was standing right there without a mask, all this, well, come on in, come on in, right? And they are, they are, and God has blessed us, it's a number one reason, but, but the community has kind of rallied behind businesses that stood up for them too. So I wanted to share that all with you. And, and we can transition on to the ATF, but now I'm, well, real quickly, let me say one more thing, that's what got me involved. So I started getting involved in local politics in a local group in Boone County, a group that is an issue-oriented group, an action-oriented group, that goes to commissioner meetings, and that speaks to local elected officials about important issues by the people. And, and then I decided to run for Congress myself. And under the umbrella of my congressional campaign, we're implementing the strategies that I learned as a Green Beret overseas, to recruit, train, and fight alongside your enemies. And what I mean by that, I'm sorry, your allies, and what I mean by that, although that can, although that could be debated right now, when you fund two sides of a war. But we, under the campaign of my umbrella, we are recruiting patriots and liberty-minded people to get involved and engage politics at the local level, particularly by running for positions like precinct committeeman and state delegate. And we were, we train them through resources that I have access to, like constitutional training courses, precinct committeeman courses, and campaign management courses that can prepare you to engage in politics and represent your precinct. And then by fight alongside you, I mean by, under the umbrella of our campaign, we will walk with you when we're out and our volunteers are out walking, knocking on doors and dropping literature in the 4th Congressional District, when you're in precinct, in your precinct, and you're under that umbrella, we're going to walk for you too, and we'll double drop literature and we'll get you elected. Because the fact is, is that your Congressman is not doing anything to stop this globalist takeover of our country that is destroying our country from within, and it starts right here, and it starts at the local level, and it starts with positions like precinct committeeman and state delegate. So I urge you to reach out to one of us here with my campaign, if you're interested in engaging at the local level like that, in helping your community, in representing your community, and helping take back our country and our Republican Party at the local level. All right, so thank you, and let's transition to defunding the ATF and getting Guy on the record here. Thank you, thank you much. And I'm always going to defer to Guy here when it comes to a lot of these issues.
Very good, was I right, the real deal, you guys? Yeah, for sure. And I know that you can hear the passion in Charles's voice when he's talking, and when I think about my COVID experience, my daughter was in the graduating class of 2020, and her high school graduation was spent in our family room. So when I hear Charles talk about how nobody did anything to stop shutting down the state of Indiana, oh boy, that really resonates with me. Now, when I was talking with Bryce, he was saying that 40% of his new customers are women, and I've been a gun owner for many years, I think my, the first time I went shooting was with my father-in-law, who's a Navy veteran, I believe it was around 2010, it might have been before then. So I've been to the range many times, gone with him and my husband, but I recently told Guy, I've never felt comfortable just going on my own, I want to get to the point where I, I don't need to have somebody there with me, I want to feel confident to be able to just carry and, and feel safe with it and know what I'm doing. So I asked Guy if he would teach me, and he did. So if there's anybody that you think could use some training, I definitely recommend asking Guy his advice, if not from him, he'll definitely know somebody to direct you to. He's known as the Gun Guy, and he's one of the smartest people I know. Here's Guy Relford from WIBC.
Well, thank you very much, and by the way, make no mistake, Casey's a badass with a gun.
Fun shots, two holes.
By, 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 by the time we walked out of that range, she had a target that, one of my favorite terms was refrigerator-worthy. She needed to put that right up, but that was a lot of fun. Well, I'm Guy Relford, and I know an awful lot of people here, and so it's great to see all of you again, but for those that don't know me, as Casey said, I have a show on WIBC called The Gun Guy, but that's kind of a very, very small part of what I do, that's just two hours on Saturdays. My full-time job is I'm a Second Amendment attorney, and, and all I handle are, are, but all I handle are cases involving Second Amendment rights, and that primarily involves criminal cases, people being prosecuted where it's apparent that they acted in lawful and justified self-defense, people being accused of crimes where we don't believe a crime occurred. I do a lot of restoration of rights where people may have made a mistake back in their past, but they've, they've turned their life around and there are legal mechanisms to, to get them their rights back, it's something I really enjoy doing. But I also have a firearms training company, I've been a firearms instructor for 30-some years now, and, and so I love teaching people how to shoot. They, they don't all turn out to be as great as students as Casey, and shoot as well as she did, but an awful lot of them do, and it's a lot of fun. I also founded, three and a half years ago, the Two A Project, and I see some loyal members in here, they're with us, but Two A Project is a local gun rights organization, really focused on Indiana and federal law as it affects us here in Indiana. I saw some time ago that the NRA was facing some real problems, mostly self-inflicted, and the national leadership of NRA really needs to be changed, and has needed a complete house cleaning in my mind for several years, NRA hasn't undertaken to do that. I'm still a benefactor-level life member of NRA, I believe we need a strong, powerful, influential NRA at the national level, but I also really worry about NRA, and, and for that reason, I didn't want to lose any momentum on gun rights here in Indiana, so I founded the Two A Project, and, and if you'd like to be involved, it's just twowaproject.com, but that's not why you came here, so I won't make it into a pitch for that. But anyway, that's who I am. And, and listen, I, I'm actually just getting to know Charles, and I loved everything I just heard. The Two A Project is a 501(c)(4), so we can be political, we can get involved in political campaigns, we can endorse candidates, we can make contributions, and so Charles and I are going to be talking a lot more, and I look forward to that. The topic of defunding the ATF is one that's near and dear to my heart, because in my job as a Second Amendment attorney, I see direct evidence every day in my job, that the ATF has become a rogue agency that's been weaponized against American citizens. And, and listen, if you know me, if you listen to my radio show, I, I'm not one that goes out on the rhetoric, I don't go to extremes, I don't throw out the hyperbole's and, and say stuff just to make an impact, I only say stuff that, that I really believe and it's really true. ATF has been weaponized against American citizens, and that happens in a number of different ways. First of all, the ATF is completely willing to do the bidding of whatever administration is in the White House, to achieve the political ends of the White House, and they don't care what the Constitution says, they don't even much care what laws say, and they do that in a couple of different ways. First of all, they, they have undertaken within the ATF to legislate. Now listen, I'm a constitutional law attorney, I don't have the whole Constitution tattooed on my body, but I got the Second Amendment right here. But I also happen to know, notwithstanding the fact that it's not tattooed on my body, that Article 1, Section 1 of the Constitution says, "All legislative power shall be vested in the Congress of the United States, consisting of a Senate and a House of Representatives." All legislative power, what's legislative? That's rulemaking, that's making laws, including those laws that can put you in jail. What is the ATF absolutely willing to do? If the, if the person in the White House says, hmm, you need to make a new crime that can put people in jail for this new thing without the involvement of Congress? They'll do it, they'll do it and put people in prison. And by the way, listen, it pains me to say this, but, and I enthusiastically voted for him twice, I would vote for him again, but Donald Trump did not do us any favors on that point. Because Donald Trump told the ATF after the horrific Las Vegas shooting, and yes, I understand they were worried about more gun control coming down the line, they're worried about a complete assault-whipping ban, they're worried about other things. And they, but they said, and this is with the concurrence and the involvement of NRA, he went to the ATF and said, make bump stocks illegal, because a bump stock was allegedly used in the Las Vegas shooting. By the way, I, I never served, many of you here have, Jesse I've known for a long time, and I got to tell you, I, I've never served in the military, but I've heard fully automatic belt-fired firearms, and I listened to the video, listened to the audio part of that video, and that did not sound like a bump stock to me, that sounded like an M60 belt-fed machine gun to me, that's another issue. But President Trump went to the ATF and said, make bump stocks illegal. Some lawyer within ATF at that moment should have said, we can't make bump stocks illegal, Congress has to make bump stocks illegal. What did ATF do? They made bump stocks illegal, and people are being, I know, I've defended the cases, now I've had every bump stock case I've had dismissed, because we can prove that a bump stock is not a machine gun, and a firearm equipped with a bump stock is not a machine gun, but that's not the point. The point is that we had a president willing to bypass Congress, notwithstanding what Article 1, Section 1 of the Constitution says, and say, let's put people in prison for something they could not have gone to prison for without the involvement of Congress, that's not the way the system works. Our founders, what, the beautiful concept of this country is based on separation of powers. It's based on a legislative branch, separate from a judicial branch, separate from an executive branch, and when the executive branch through administrative agencies like the ATF undertakes all the functions that we've given government, legislative, they make rules, including rules that can put you in prison. Judicial, they'll interpret their own rules, and, and the Supreme Courts allowed them the authority to do that. And then they execute those laws, they enforce those laws, that's all three powers of government sitting right in one agency, and that's the ATF, and not just ATF, it's EPA, IRS, FBI, and we've seen too many examples of that. And, and we've allowed it to happen, but the ATF's right out front in terms of the number of abuses. So they will take whatever the commands are from the administration and the White House for purely political ends, and they will make rulemaking that will put you in prison. And, and since President Trump sort of blazed those trails for us unfortunately originally, but what have we seen since then? Right? The so-called ghost gun rule, yes, did somebody say Guy? I'm sorry. The ghost gun rules, right? Now we've got forced reset triggers that are in the crosshairs, we've got pistol braces. ATF said, they're completely legal, you're good, you have, you have a pistol brace on your pistol, it doesn't turn into an SBR, you don't have to register it. 10 years that goes on, how many braced firearms did people buy and sell in that time period? For 10 years? President Biden says, no, no, those aren't legal anymore, we want to make those illegal. ATF, make those illegal. ATF goes, sure. Now suddenly you go to prison for 10 years for having the same firearm that they told you was completely legal 10 years ago. How's that supposed to work? How's that work under principles of due process? How's that work under the principles of separation of powers? Our founders, our founders would be so disgusted with us right now for allowing us to be where we are on these issues, but it doesn't stop there, there are many other examples. But that's, that's the legislating at the, at the request of the politicians. There's another issue though, because ATF has a bunch of different sections, there's the lifers, the staffers, the appointees that are controlling policy. On the ground, the people we have right here in Indiana, we have enforcement, they're the door kickers, right? They think somebody's got illegal machine guns, they're selling out of their house, they show up, they got guns and badges. they show up, they got guns and badges and body armor, and they'll show up and kick your door in, and they'll arrest you and take you to jail. It's enforcement. Then you've got industry operations. And industry operations for the entire, their entire existence, but right up until two or three years ago, right about the time the current president was elected. Coincidence? No. But for years and years, and Bryce and anybody else that'll tell you, and Charles mentioned an FFL, a Federal Firearms Licensee, that's a commercial gun shop. Anybody who runs a gun shop will tell you, especially, I know people that've had gun shops for 30, 40 years. And they said for years and years and years, industry operations, their goal and their mission was to show up and help you run your business, help you stay on the right side of the law, show you how to fill out the forms, show you how your records should be kept. Because there are laws that require you to keep records and keep records in a certain way. Right? And their job was to show up and help you. And you know what their mission is as of two and a half, three years ago? And they'll tell you, because they have told me. Now, I've had people say, "I'm going to retire from my job. I love this job. I enjoy this job, but I'm going to retire from this job because I'm told now by my bosses, the staffers, the lifers, the bureaucrats, my job is to find any excuse to put an FFL out of business. Oh, you signed on this line? You should have signed on that line. Oh, you didn't stamp your address in the right location on the form? Oh, these forms aren't in the right chronological order for them to be searched." Ridiculous BS stuff that ATF has been charged with putting good, solid, honest, conscientious, patriotic businesses out of business. And make no mistake, it's not just because they don't like gun shops. It's a backdoor assault on your Second Amendment rights. They've just, they've figured out, they can't get anything through Congress because the elected representatives of the people won't vote for what them to vote for, what they want them to vote for. So what are we going to do? We're going to choke them off economically. How many credit card companies and banks won't do business with gun shops anymore? And that's from pressure from the government. But the ATF's been weaponized to do just that through the agency, the industry operations people. And I see it. And then I represent Casey. The last thing, and I hope I'm not going too long. But the last thing I see is how they enforce the laws that exist and how it's gone off the rails completely in just in the last few years. And this isn't the direction of the administration. There's no doubt in my mind. For instance, I defended a guy, FFL, who sold a lot of guns at gun shows. Let me just tell you right now, make no mistake, if you sell guns at gun shows, you are in the crosshairs of ATF. You are in the crosshairs. They are taking your picture. They're going to come up, they're going to be in plain clothes, and they're going to come up and they're going to engage you in conversation. They're going to look at what you're selling. They're going to take pictures. They're going to interview people that just bought guns from you. They're going to do a lot to try to build a criminal case against you for violating some. I'm telling you right now, you are being watched and surveilled if you sell guns at gun shows. This guy sold quite a few guns at gun shows, but he's completely legit, did everything right. At one point, he also, by the way, was a manufacturer, had a manufacturer's license through his SOT. His special occupational tax allowed him to deal with NFA-regulated firearms, like suppressors and fully automatic firearms and short-barreled rifles, et cetera. And he had fully licensed, he could make suppressors, and did. And suppressor's a pretty easy damn thing to make, actually. It's roughly the same degree of technology as a muffler. In fact, the same guy who invented automobile mufflers invented the suppressor, if you didn't know. Hiram Percy Maxim, exactly right. And in fact, his original name for his firearm muffler, he called it, was the silencer. And that's where that name comes from. It was his brand name. But at any rate, this client of mine, he should never had to be a client of mine. He should never had to hire a lawyer. He made suppressors. At one point, he called his, actually emailed, by the grace of God, he emailed his local ATF guy and he said, "You know, I'm making these suppressors. I know when they're complete, I need to register them with a serial number as a registered NFA item so that we can go through the NFA process when somebody comes in and buys a suppressor. When do I need to notify you that these are complete and are a registrable NFA item?" He said, "Well, when they're complete, when they're complete." "What do you mean? Well, okay, well, I make the tube, and then I thread it, then I make it end cap. Well, when all that's done, within 24 hours, when it's completely done, you tell us." I said, "Okay." The NRA cooked up some, or NRA, the ATF cooked up some excuse to come raid his business. When they did, they found 18 unfinished suppressors. None of them have even been threaded. They're just aluminum tubes. They were not threaded and they were not capped. He had serialized them, and they said, "You have unregistered suppressors here." And booked him on 18 felony counts to put, and threatened with having him convicted to serve those consecutively. He was looking at 100 years in prison. And they had told him to do it exactly the way he was doing it. That's what they're, and you know what? They just want to beat you up so bad that you say, "To hell with this." And you know what he said at the end of the process? "No, did I get all that dismissed?" "Yes." "Do you have to pay me money?" "Yes, he did." "I cut his bill by about 80% because he's a small business guy and couldn't really afford a big legal bill, but I did it mainly out of anger at the ATF." And at the end of the day, you know what he said? "To hell with this. I'm going to go do a business where if I keep my records in the wrong order, I don't go to prison for 10 years." Because that's what the ATF is looking for people to do. So we have a bureaucratic problem. We have a legislative problem. And we have an enforcement problem, all within the ATF. And the ATF is a willing, weaponized participant in the program to assault your Second Amendment rights. And it angers me. It angers me. And I, because one thing I hate, I've always hated. I grew up with a household of three sisters and a mom. So I was the only guy, no pun intended. And nothing pisses me off more than a bully. And I grew up, I was, to this day, I went to my 50th, I don't know, way up there anniversary or reunion. And I had a bunch of people come up to me and said, "Man, you know, I remember guys, when that person was bullying me, you came up and said something to them, and they decided not to be a bully anymore." I've just hated bullies my whole life. Right now, the ATF is the biggest bully we have in the government, right up there with the FBI. And I hate, it's really hard not to cuss right there. I hate a bully. I hate a bully. And that's why when I got invited to speak on the issue of defunding the ATF, I was glad to come talk about it because we have a bully right now, and they got guns, and they got badges, and they can put you in prison for a damn long time. And even if they don't put you in prison, they can cause you to go through hell and spend your life savings in order to defend yourself. That's not okay, and that's not what the founders of this country had in mind. So I'm honored to be here and speak on that topic.
Thank you, Guy. When I was invited to introduce Charles, I sent Guy a text and I said, "Hey, this is Defund the ATF meeting, Town Hall meeting. What do you think of this?" And Guy replied back with a real long text, and, "Oh, yeah, I'm real passionate about this." And I'm so glad that he agreed to come not only support Charles and support me, but actually speak to everybody. And like I mentioned, one of the smartest guys I know. So thank you, Guy. Fantastic job. So I think, Margaret, you want to see if there's some questions, right? And I'll start it off because I'm sure you have a lot of questions for Charles, maybe a couple for Guy as well, none for me except for one. And I'll give you the answer right away. The question that I get asked all the time is, "How do I work with Rob Kendall?" And the answer is patience, tenacity, and wine at the end of the day. So, besides that, what is the number one question that you get asked all the time?
Here's a good one. What's your political experience, Mr. Booker Walter? And which my response is, a little bit about my background of working with a local organization and recruiting people to get involved and informed. And they say, "Well, don't you think you need to be elected to office first before you run for Congress?" And my answer is emphatic, no, absolutely not. It is an asset to not be. And my other response is, "What, you mean like Congressman Baer? You mean to be a commissioner and then be a state rep? When they get their hooks in, then the lobbyists, and then they start controlling you, and then become a United States representative?" And the answer is no. I see it as an asset. It doesn't mean that I don't have political experience. It just means that I'm not an elected official. That's probably one of the top questions that I get, yeah.
We have a name for people like that who do that, who start off and then keep going, office hoppers and grifters. And we asked you that when we interviewed you that very first time. Do you feel like you need to start smaller and work your way up? And you were, "Nope, I'm going straight there."
Absolutely. And absolutely, I've got a lot of experience. Like, this is half of what I've done in my life, a lot of experience to do this. Frankly, what I refer to as both Republicans and Democrats as, you know how they put an R or a D after their name? I just put a C after their name for captured. Because nine and a half out of 10 of them are completely captured by the system because that's how they did it. They went in and they got that. They're called political opportunists. They're political opportunists, that they ran for their first seat just to get their foot in the door so that they could make some deals to get their next office. And frankly, I would treat this, I've already been endorsed by US term limits, and I would treat this just like I treated my military career. This is not a career for me. This is something that needs to be done. We're at an inflection point. I think that we're going to see a lot of patriots get elected to office in the future. I think we're going to see some significant change in the future, and this is what it's going to take. It's what it's going to take. Because we've been at the sleep at the wheel for too long. It's our fault, you guys. It's our fault that we've been on vacation. We're the owners of this, we're the owners of this government that we have. But we have been on vacation, and it's time to show up for work again and do something about it. And so we need everybody, includes you all too. It includes making a sacrifice and running for precinct commitment. It includes making a sacrifice by maybe taking off part-time and going to a commissioners' meeting that's 10 a.m. in the morning on an important issue that they're talking about. That's the kind of sacrifice that it takes from everybody. And if you don't have time and you don't have talent, then it means that you might have to dig in your pocket and support a candidate, like candidacy like mine, that's never going to receive any lobbyist dollars or any PAC money before the primary. Okay? So time, talent, and treasure.
That's an interesting point you bring up, and I want to remind everybody here tonight. Thank you guys so much for coming. But Charles said he doesn't have PAC money. This event tonight was free, so if you feel the urge to donate to his campaign, we definitely encourage that as well.
And by the way, on the point of no prior elected official experience, when you go back, and I know a lot of you have, I know some of you personally, I know you have, but you go back and read a lot of the documents from the founding of this country, our founders talked a lot about the civilian servant, the citizen servant. And that's what we're talking about. I think anymore it's a badge of honor when people are new to the political system for all the reasons I've been talking about. But citizen servant, I'll also throw out though that you also don't necessarily have to be elected to be a citizen servant because I know a lot of you people right here in this room will show up when we have issues at the State House. Kelly from Avon, Kelly and I go way back. When we have a Second Amendment-related bill, pro or anti, you know, for us or against us, and there are committee hearings. It's about showing up. It's about showing up. Because there may only be 40 people, 50 people in that room at that committee hearing. Those legislators have their finger in the air, and they're checking out which way the wind's blowing. And when we show up, and people have their Two A Project t-shirts on, and it's not just a bunch of people in red t-shirts that say Moms Demand on them, but the Two A people show up and we make our voices heard, we have an impact, and that's exactly why we have constitutional care. So, hey, you can be citizen servant, but I'm proud of people running for office that have no prior political experience because that's what they are. They're citizen servants.
Hey, this, pardon me, real quick, this reminds me of a conversation I had with a surgeon when I was still in sales, and he asked me, "Why is it that America is so prosperous and is this great democracy?" And he asked me on the spot, and I just thought, "Well, probably because George Washington served eight years and walked away from power." And he did it, and I would bring that up to talk, he got that idea from Cincinnatus, right? So these are men that are walking away from power because it's, they're servants. They're citizen servants. Their heart is at home. They're doing it for a reason. They're not political opportunists, which is, again, 9.8. It went from 9.5, I think it's 9.8, maybe 9.9 out of 10 of all of our elected representatives, frankly.
Charles, you're a decorated veteran, and I'm wondering if you could tell us what your experience in the Army has taught you and what, which of those lessons would you take with you into office?
Well, there's so many, you know. Inside the box versus outside the box thinking is one. I went to Ranger School when I was 34 years old. So, yeah, 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 that's right. That's right. They called me grandpa, by the way, with a bunch of young guys. I'd already been to combat. I was already Green Beret. I'd already earned a Bronze Star. And one of the cadre pulled me to the side because he said, you know, "I know about USF guys, you know. You guys, you think outside the box, right? That's what they, outside the box thinkers." But he said, "I got something for you." I'll never forget this. He said, "To know what's outside the box, Sergeant Booker Walter, you need to know what's inside the box." And what, and I'm like, "Oh, yeah." Because as in, I'm like, "I don't, you know, do I need Ranger School? I don't really need to do this." But yeah, it was a good, you know, I learned that to lead, you have to be able to follow, right? So I've learned to follow in my life, good leaders. Well, here I was, a decorated staff sergeant in the military, in Ranger School, with 18-year-olds that didn't know what they were doing. And I was in charge for a little while, and they pulled me aside, and they put an 18-year-old in charge. And then you had to step back and let that 18-year-old go work and do his best and learn how to become an infantry sergeant, you know, or a squad leader, a platoon leader. So that's, I learned the value of being humble or the value of human touch, for example, through COVID. I had a cadre during our infantry training, SUT, Small Unit Tactics, that, you know, and just put this in perspective. When you're, when you take action, you do the three Ds, distance, direction, description. So two men, 12 o'clock, 200 meters, right? And everyone gets online, and you aim your rifles at that target, and you overcome the target. And this cadre said, "Guys, you're going to be leading, people don't speak the same language as you, young people, 18-year-olds, 22-years, looking down the barrel of a rifle for the first time, that are going to be scared out of their minds. So as a leader, don't just go up there. Don't yell at them. Don't lose your cool. Don't lose control." He said, "Lay down on top of them. Put your leg on them. Put your arm around them and tell them, 'It's okay, stud. Just keep shooting. 2 o'clock, 200 meters, 12 o'clock, 200 meters. You're going to be all right.'" And then go to the next guy and do the same. Have compassion, even in a scenario where you're in war, is to have compassion.
So I'm wondering if you could speak on your experiences in the business world and also being a father and husband, and from that, what you would take into office?
Gosh, that's, I don't know, I think managing small businesses sets you up for a lot of things because you see, you know, this regulation we're talking, it's not about just the ATF. You know, it's arguable, when you define fascism, that that's kind of what we're living under right now already. Because you can't own a business in Indiana without having a license and paying the taxes and doing this and asking for permission here and asking for permission there and doing it here. You can't hire a 14-year-old unless these conditions are met or a 15-year-old unless these conditions are met. So we are regulated to a level that's an unbelievable level that, like Guy said, the founding fathers would be appalled, completely appalled that, that, you know, we have to work from January to May to pay them to regulate us and to fund the ATF and the IRS and the FBI and all the other organizations. So most people don't have that understanding of what it meant to, like, for example, go through COVID with a small business, worried about the 20 employees that you have and the payroll and paying your lease and paying your mortgage and keeping your business afloat and what the bank, the finances with the bank. This is incredible experience when people, when the government just says that they're going to send out $600 stimulus checks. I'm telling the young kids, "Guy, you guys," they're like, "Oh, we're going to get $600." And I said, "And in three years, Jimmy John sandwiches are going to be 10 bucks." And guess what? Jimmy John sandwiches are 10 bucks. Jimmy John sandwiches are 10 bucks and fuel is almost $5 a gallon. And it's not that hard to see if you just pay attention, if you study some economics. But again, our congressman didn't, he voted for all of that, all of it. Didn't stand up for the lockdowns, voted for the CARES Act, voted for all of that. You know, so, you know, I think, and small businesses are what actually run the economy of America. And what we're constantly seeing now is this managerial class that wants to centralize all authority and decision-making and, and run the rest of us out of business. And so that they continue to consolidate businesses, consolidate sectors for themselves to give a little business or create niche markets to invest our taxpayer dollars in. And, you know, and I have three homeschool daughters that as soon as they, that I feel that they are competent, there will be a stool in front of that cash register. And part of their homeschooling is gonna be taking orders at Jimmy John's and counting money and learning how to change money back. Cause that's the way we used to do it. We used to teach our kids that way. And they robbed us of those experiences and we're not better off for it. We're not, is the world better today than it was 20 years ago? Is America better today? No, despite the massive regulation, despite the increase in taxes, it's not better off. And we've got to do something and we've got to do something forthwith, and that means immediately, to stop this, this overreach from our federal government.
Thank you.
If I can jump in real quick here, we've got a question from online, if you don't mind. It's actually for Guy. And the question is, if the laws that the ATF are passing, these regulations are, are not legal, why is any law enforcement agency around the country, why are they allowed to come and arrest you if they know that you're going to get dropped anyway? What's, why, why? Well, the question is, then why do we recognize their authority if it's illegal?
Well, and, and we recognize their authority because they show up with guns and handcuffs and they take you to prison. Then unfortunately, then they have to go hire a lawyer to go fight it in the legal system. And, and let me tell you, we're winning that battle. It's, it's a constant battle. And, and, and it can be expensive. Like I said, you may win, but lose your life savings in the process. Depending on, on how much they want to steadfastly stay after you. But we're winning that. And in fact, you're starting to see some, the different attacks, legal attacks on some of these things that have been passed. For instance, a lot, a lot of this is falling because it violates the second amendment. And we had a great decision last year, the Bruin case out of the Supreme Court that greatly helps us on that. And I won't bore you with all the details, but it's a lot easier to have a law now, whether it's a regulation passed by ATF or even a law passed by a legislature, including Congress declared unconstitutional. But we're also making attacks successfully, even under the Administrative Procedures Act. The, the, and that, and that sets out the rules for how they even are supposed to pass their own rules within the agency. And we had a great decision out of Texas where they said the pistol brace rule, they didn't follow their own rules on, on coming up with that regulation. Because if you remember, there was an original rule that said, we're gonna have this crazy point system based on caliber and barrel length and weight and yada, yada. And then you add up all the points and they scrapped that completely when they came out with the final rule. And that's not okay under the rule. So we had, we're having at least one court set that aside. And then we've got the Article One, Section One attack, which is, this is, is a, is a, is a, an unconstitutional legislative activity that there's no constitutional support for them to do. But we're winning that battle, but we're winning it case by case by case. And unfortunately, so many people come out and they'll say, like on pistol braces, when it came to that final rule, all over the, all over the internet, people are saying, well, I'm not, I'm not taking my pistol brace off because that'll be overturned by the courts tomorrow. I'll say, folks, we're still fighting bump stocks. And that's been what, five years, four and a half? And, and yeah, some courts have said it's illegal. Some have upheld it in places like Maryland and Connecticut and places you'd expect. So until the Supreme Court takes it, it's gonna be piecemeal. So there's a long answer to that question. We have to fight it, you know, in every village, on every beach, right? I'm, I never served, so I hate to use military analogs because I'm not, I'm not qualified to do so. But we gotta fight it wherever it rears up its ugly head and, and, and fight it. And then, and then also go at the, at the, at the, at the political solution, which is having the right people in elected office to pull those reins back on these out of control agencies.
So if you have a question for Charles or Guy, get that formulated in your head. We'll give you a chance here in just a minute. I did want to ask Charles something. We talk about this a lot on the Kendall and Casey Show. You know, we had the omnibus bill at the end of last year. Everything was in that, including the kitchen sink. And then they turned around at the Inflation Reduction Act, which really didn't reduce inflation. As we all know, prices have remained high. And it just came out this week that before the Biden administration, if you spent $100 on something today, you're spending $119 and I think 57 cents or something like that. So nearly $20 more and it's remaining at that level. So what is your position on the federal spending?
First of all, these bills, when they're named that way to throw you off, right? The Patriot Act was not patriotic. And the Inflation Reduction Act is not gonna reduce, yeah. And so this is, and I've said this, and this is not hyperbole. This is the greatest threat to our nation. This debt is the greatest threat to our nation. It results in massive inflation. What we're seeing right now is probably gonna result in a, in dollar devaluation. Yeah, yeah. And this is how it is. This is always how empires work like this. This is why the Constitution says that they will not print money. The founders knew all about this. The first time this happened was a guy named Jean-Law in France about fiat currency and about, about banking, fractional reserve banking. That it always results in this scenario. And, and so the Constitution said that you will only be able to print specie payments. Specie being gold and silver. Because as soon as you allow the government to print off money, then they're gonna do things like, the first thing they'll do is go to war forever. Because that's where they can, they can hide it. And so it results in the need, the necessity to continue to print money, to continue to invest, to prop it up. And war, that's why I think that the next step for this is war with Iran. That's what they want. They want war with Iran. They need to print off a lot of money and go to war with Iran. The second most nefarious or pernicious policy is this Green New Deal stuff. Because that is where they've can create a niche market and use our taxpayer dollars and just flood it with this money. The, this green thing is a complete scam, a complete hoax. But they need to have these hoaxes so they can print off this money and keep this scam going. So, you know, I don't know what we do about it. You know, I'll be like, I, I think we need to have an asset-backed currency is what we need to have. Is an asset-backed currency, a gold and silver. That's why they did it. And they did it because Europeans had internecine fighting the whole history. And they knew that the only way they would get it done is a prince would have to go borrow money from a bank. That's the only way he could do it. And that's when they started chipping the coins and devaluing their currency. Because otherwise, and the way that, the reason the founders did it the way they did it is because they wanted our politicians to have to come to us and ask us, hey, we need $100,000 this year to give to Ukraine from each one of you so we can go support Ukraine. And then we could all go, ah, no, I don't think so. No, I don't, I'm not gonna give you $100,000 this year for, for Ukraine. And then 200,000 next year. But they don't have to ask for our permission anymore. They just do it, they just print it off, yeah.
So we're now at 34 trillion in debt and just paying the interest on that, not even paying down the debt. And the continuing resolution is gonna be up, I believe, next week. They're, you know, gonna have to vote on that. And now the questions of aid, not only for Ukraine, but also Israel coming up. If you were currently sitting in the seat that you aspire to have, which way would you go?
It's easy, you guys, this is what it takes. This is what you need to ask your elected representatives, what would we do here? And people don't want to hear it. But the fact is, is that we can't fear lockdown, we can't fear shutdown government. We can't fear this fight. We, this is where we have to hold them accountable. Look what has happened heretofore with the 20 that held out in January and then the eight that held out recently. And by the way, your congressman voted for the omnibus bill last year. That, that was the impetus for all this Green New Deal spending. And your congressman voted for the last continuing resolution. And we cannot do that. We, and I'm saying it loudly and boldly so that when I win this primary and I go there, I'm, I will be able to come back to you all and all the other town hall meetings we're gonna do and say, this is why I did it, you guys. And everyone's mad at us, the 20 of us out there, because we're disrupting politics as usual. But if you want to change, you have to be prepared to disrupt politics as usual. So it's an emphatic no, yes, yes. It's an emphatic no to the omnibus bill. It's an emphatic no to the continuing resolutions. And it's outstanding that the leadership broke these appropriation bills out so that we can get people on record for what they're funding. This ATF appropriation bill is ATF, Department of Justice, Commerce and Science or something like that. And we're prepared, at least I am prepared, and I think more will be able to go out there and say, no. It's, it's, we're just saying no more. And that is the role of Congress, like Guy said. And since the New Deal and World War II and all this, we are all focused on one thing. And it's unfortunate, we're focused on the presidency. And our republic was not designed that way. The Congress is the closest to the people. Congress has given up their responsibilities to hold the government accountable through what? The budgetary process. And that's what we have to do. And so we just say, no, no more money. And, and, and people will get, they'll get upset, well, my cousin is an ATF agent. Well, your cousin's gonna have to go find a new job. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is. There are 5,099 ATF employees right now. And they're gonna have to go find a job. They're on notice. That's just the way it is. They have a budget of $1.5 billion. And that $1.5 billion should not go to another agency. It needs to go back to us, back to us.
But Charles, I have a question. It's something I've thought about. And, and, and as I've, years ago, would contemplate running for office and it's something I, that I'm, I'm well past doing at this age. But what we see over and over again is people that I think believe in their messages and they go to Washington and one of two things happen. They just buy in to the machine and, and they, and they just become another cog in the wheel. But we also, or see, alternatively, they get frustrated and they leave. Like for instance, I, I, I live in the fourth district. I live in Boone County as well.
Where that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to earn your vote today.
But Victoria Sparts was my representative before the redistricting and obviously she's not running. But I, you know, and, and I've talked a lot to Victoria and she just got frustrated because she felt like she was one voice in the wilderness. And, and, and that to me is the challenge. And, and there's a question in here somewhere. But, but how do you avoid one of those two alternatives? Neither one of which results in any, you know, betterment for your constituents. One is just getting sucked into the machine and, and, and become part of the system or letting the, the machine discourage you and eat you up to where you just want to come home and run your businesses? How are you, how are you prepared to go deal with that inherent frustration you're likely to see in Washington?
So first thing for, what does scripture say about money? What, but what is not, not, money isn't the root of all evil? That's right. And we have too many people that are political opportunists because they love money. And they go enrich themselves in Washington DC. Your representative should not be enriching themselves. And if I win the primary, I, at this point, I don't even care. I'll show them my W2s, I'll show my net worth and you can see that I will go out to Washington DC and I am not gonna enrich myself in Washington DC. It takes a moral person that's not willing to go out there and trade their, on their inside information. And I'm sure they're tempted to do this in a number of ways. But you have to just, you have to be moral about it. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, is frankly, again, I don't want to, I think I'm running the line of being hyperbolic here, but I, I think I'm in a good crowd. We are at an inflection point, ladies and gentlemen. I don't think that we have that much more time. I could say a crazy thing right now and a month from now, it's gonna be true. It literally is how this is happening. So I don't think in the two terms or however many terms that I go out there, I don't think it's gonna be business as usual anymore. I think, I think we're at an inflection point and I think that we're gonna see significant change. And if you agree with me, you know, we need to send the people across Indiana. It's a shame that we don't have an incredibly solid, strong conservative representation in Washington DC. But I think you're gonna see it across the nation. And whether we do or whether we don't, I don't think that we have that many years left of business as usual. Yeah. Now, I mean, the dollar's gonna collapse or, or something like that's gonna occur. There's gonna, we're already, you know, on the, on a, possibly in a, in a deflationary time or a recession, which could lead to a depression or anything like that. I think we're gonna see significant change. So I don't think that's gonna be optional. I think that change is gonna be forced on us. And it's because you guys are gonna send people like me there to actually make it. And when that change is gonna happen, there's gonna be a great reset. It's just, is it gonna be there? Are they gonna reset it or are we gonna reset this great reset? Right? Cause there's gonna be a fight. Does the Tea Party? Um, I think the Tea Party was an incredible movement, like a lot of movements, was completely usurped by Dennis Hastert. Yeah, because that's what they do. What do you mean? Uh, what do you mean, what's different now? Like I'm not.
The Tea Party just got shut down. And what you're talking about is the change is coming.
Yeah. Because this is 20 more years. This is 35 years of inflation. This is two, uh, two, three years post pandemic.
The establishment that shut them down. How, how is a guy like you gonna be able to, to, just like I said?
That's right. Because, because I've watched what's going on in January to now. And I watched 20 guys out there completely disrupt Washington DC. They weren't, they were, they were pilloried, they were scorned and they were mocked by the establishment that said, and there are people in Indiana, in Indiana politics that asked Margaret and asked other people on my campaign team, how does Charlie feel about, about Matt Gaetz and them holding out? And we're like, we're all for it. And they're like, well, then I, I can't support him. I can't support him. But look at what they have done. They, they got rid of a speaker that they had a deal with and they held him accountable. And then they set new rules with a new speaker. And if he doesn't come through, then they hold him accountable and you shut it down. These are things that haven't ever happened before. It's been a long time. And we all know, some of us were woke, have been woke for the, for a decade, right? We've known what's going on, the real woke, right? But COVID and Donald Trump woke a lot of people up, right? That's a change. That's what's different than the Tea Party time. And, you know, I think that what we can do is learn from that. And I don't know if it was Dennis Hastert or one of those guys, those retreads that went in and usurped that movement. Because all of these political movements, one of the worst thing about these political movements is they grasp on, they clamor on to a former politician or someone famous because they want their organization to get some kind of notice or something. And so they go to a guy like Dennis Hastert, like I'm interested in the Tea Party. Like, oh, you can come be our chair. And then that's their infiltration. That's the, that was the establishment infiltrating these organizations. So we have to be very aware of that on a local level in your local groups. If you are in a political action group or if you're working to recruit precinct committeemen to run, you've gotta be leery when an establishment politician comes to you and says, hey, I'm interested in your group. They are, they are trying to infiltrate your group is what is happening.
So do you have the guts to stare them down and say, get the hell out of my office? I'm gonna sit here to get away from people like you.
Yeah. I, I would, I would like to be what Ron Paul was. Ron Paul was Dr. No and lobbyists did not go to Ron Paul's office. They knew, he, he talks about this. He says that lobbyists did not go to Ron Paul's office. They knew, he talks about this. He says that lobbyists just didn't even come anymore. And I've heard it from someone else. I thought it was good advice. They said they didn't take any lobbyist PAC money until they had a voting record. I kind of liked that idea. And when you got a voting record, and a lobbyist comes to you, and they're like, whatever it may be, solar panels, hey, I want to give you $10,000. By the way, the solar panel companies owns many Republicans here in the state of Indiana. And they come to me like, sure, you can give me $10,000, but there's my voting record. I'm voting against all of your solar panel stuff, right? But if you want to give me $10,000, that's, that's fine. I need the money. I'll use it. But that's my voting record, and I'm not changing it, right? And what did I say? That's why I talked about what I stood up against, against COVID.
Apparently, you'll be the only one.
There's a few. There's a few, but you got to start somewhere. And you can't, you know, I'm sorry?
Clay Higgins.
Clay, there's Chip Roy, there's Matt Gaetz, there's Thomas Massey.
Boys are pushy.
He is.
He's an establishment dude.
Watch him.
Yeah. Well, you know, look, look, you know, you guys aren't going to agree with everything that I say either. But it's like getting on the bus and moving forward. We're all on the same bus moving forward. You just might get off at a stop before we get there. But we're all in the same direction, right? And we got to, you know, we've got to rally around some of these important issues. Yeah.
You're on MSNBC. You're on Fox. Camera's on you. Are you willing to tell whoever's interviewing you, on behalf of legal lawful AR-15 owners, Mr. ATF, you can go to hell now?
Yes. I don't care. I don't care.
We stand on the sidelines every time there's a school shooting, every time there's an act of violence by a criminal, who the ATF don't care about. The ATF actually need criminals. We stand there, we watch, and who gets their asses kicked? We do. And we got nothing to do with it. So it would be great to have a soundbite of you uploaded that we can all pull up on our phones and post on Facebook saying, lawful governors didn't do this again, gang.
When given, yes, sir. Yes, sir. When given the opportunity, I would. And if I ever have an opportunity to talk like, you know, to debate this kind of stuff, the first call I'm going to make is the guy, Ralph. In preparation for these conversations...
I was going to say, that's five to seven Saturdays on WIBC. Is that right there? But I'll tell you another, I won't just throw out challenges, but just something to be thinking about. And that is, and I would like to hear your reaction to this too, which is that, that to get anything done in any legislative body, and I'm most familiar day to day with the Indiana General Assembly. And I, I've written, I don't know, a dozen, 15 or so bills that are now the law of the state of Indiana on 2A issues. And so it's about getting things passed, getting things done, getting things that change people's lives, change the law, and thereby change people's lives. So here's the conflict. And that is, it's, it's going in, being true to your principles, at the same time having the ability to build consensus. Because a lot of, there have been a lot of folks who've gone into legislative bodies, let's just take Indiana General Assembly. There are people who have gone into the General Assembly, and when you hear their messages, and you hear their politics, it all sounds fabulous. And you think, wow, I buy into that person's message. And their message is great, but they're just god awful at building consensus. And in fact, would even on occasion want to disparage their own party, or disparage others in their own party, because they weren't as conservative as they were, in order to build their base, and to build their possibility of being reelected. And it can be very effective, and it can get them reelected. At the same time, those people never got a bill passed, ever. I could name names. I don't want to embarrass anybody. And it's because they could never build a consensus, because they didn't work well with others. So the challenge is to be true to your principles, and not compromise on your principles, but to move other people to your position, so that we have a better country. Or in my example, we have a better state. And that's what's tough. Because, because if you focus on building consensus, that doesn't mean giving in, doesn't mean becoming part of the machine, but it also means you have to have that, that, I think it's, it's on a personal level. It's a skill set. Some people have, some people don't. To go in and convince people, to build consensus, to preach the message. Now, that I am qualified to talk about. My dad retired at age 88 as a Methodist pastor. So I was home-churched as well. Not just at home, but in the church. But at any rate, but to move people to your message, and to your position, and not alien everybody that you need to actually get anything done, that's the challenge, is being true to your, to your politics, and to your, and to your core convictions, but still get something done. Not just build a base back home. That's a challenge.
So first of all, you know, look, I'm not sure of this gentleman's experience over here, but, you know, selling $2 million robots to surgeons that have been doing laparoscopic surgery their entire career, or open surgery, requires building consensus with surgeons, and surgical techs, and nurses, and everyone in that process. Being in high-end sales like that is all about consensus building. And we're among friends here. So we could talk a little bit the way we are, talking, rabble rousing, just a little bit. But I do understand that you do have to play nice. You have to work with people all the time. And that's why I don't practice ad hominem attacks, for example. I don't attack people personally. Tonight, I've only talked about Jim Baird's voting record, right? I understand Jim Baird is a nice guy. I've heard he's a nice guy. And in fact, if we sat down to dinner, we'd probably get along a lot of time. But Jim Baird is not fighting for us, for the things that, that need to be done. And I think my overall approach to legislating is going to be a little bit different than what a lot of people do. The way I would talk about consensus building, like, Thomas Massey has an incredible voting record, and times, he's the only single no vote on some issues. But he still gets things done, and he still gets reelected, and he's still respected in the United States Congress. So I'm sure there's places where I can build on particular issues consensus, consensus with, in fact, it'd probably be consensai, right? Consensus with Massey and his folks, and other conservative legislators. But the fact is, is that when I look at it, and unless I'm looking at it wrong, y'all, I'm not there to pass more laws. That's not what I'm there to do. I'm looking for the opportunity to say, no. No more of this. No more funding this. I'm not going to go there and build my career on passing legislation, because here's what it looks like. Here's what it looks like. You become, you didn't drop a name, but I hear so many rumors, and I don't believe half of them, but I'll share this one with you, that one of the reasons that Congressman Baird wants to rerun for election is because he doesn't, he hasn't passed a piece of legislation. And the important piece of legislation, that he has two that I know of. One is a piece of legislation that is going to put a, an ID, a license number on catalytic converters. So that you can track a catalytic converter when it's stolen. It's got a serial number on it, right? So that's what passing legislation does. You know what that will require? An agency. To enforce this, it will require businesses getting, having to buy, redo their entire workshop of how they build catalytic converters to stamp this on it. So regulation, enforcement, and all this. And that's the last thing that I would do. I could, I think that I could do my, my few terms in Congress and walk away with no legislation, a very happy man. If we were able to reduce legislation, say no, be disruptive there. The second piece of legislation that Congressman Baird is a sponsor on, you're not going to believe it, is the...
I believe that.
Yeah. It's true. And it's okay. Is the Carbon Sequestration Collaboration Act.
Oh, is he for that?
He's the primary sponsor of the bill, which is part of the Energy Act, which is an amendment, which, again, what does that do? What does that do? That's right. It creates an agency that's going to look further into carbon sequestration. And what do you think the result of that inquiry is going to find? That we need to fund more carbon sequestration, because that's how these agencies work. To $8 billion, is that what it is? Yeah. So, you know, I'm not naive, but my intent to go there is I'm not going to get off that bird and look for an opportunity to write new legislation. That's not what it is. It's to be disruptive and to stop business as usual in what is going on. Yeah.
I think you've got to be halfway pissed. Halfway pissed. We're all the way pissed.
Yeah, buddy. Yeah, baby.
I mean, I couldn't walk down the same hallway with Adam Schiff. And Biden would bet on it. Why? Look, probably, I hope you know where you're at. You know? I mean...
Yep.
He's a bad and evil.
Yep.
There's lions and snakes. That's your part. There is a lot of, there is a lot of momentum around the nation, in our networks. We're hearing a lot of other people being and being... So it's a complex problem. It requires a complex answer, which means it's not a magic bullet. It's the only way to accomplish things. It means that we here need to get, we're just agitated, whatever, and become more involved, insulate the state from federal influence through precinct committee processes, right? Become more involved locally, and to have more events like this when we're talking, right? To increase discourse. Historically, we've said polite society doesn't talk about politics and money. What does that bullshit? That's what makes it...
Not a polite society anymore.
We appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We've been at this for an hour and a half now. I'm sure we could go for another hour and a half, but there's a debate tonight. Ron DeSantis, Gavin Newsom. So I have some homework that I need to go do for tomorrow's show. Yeah, yeah, that's my assignment. But as we leave, I remember, May 7 is the big date for Charles, because that's the primary. And that's truly his election. So I want to leave on one last question for you. And that is that there's a younger person here in our group tonight. And when we think of voting, voting is about your future, right? It's about our future. What do you want to see things moving forward? We get a lot of promises. I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. And when I think of elections, I think of my daughter. She's 22 years old. She's scared. She's about to graduate college and has no idea what this country is going to look like. Is she going to be able to find a job that's going to pay for rent? You know, what is health insurance going to look like for her? And she, you know, she gets really nervous about it. And I'm sure that there are a lot of young people who have those concerns. We have currently an 81-year-old president. There's no way he can relate to what she's going through. And we have an entire generation, Gen Zs with the pink hair, who think differently from older generations. You have three young daughters. So when we talk about future, give us a broad stroke. You said you want to not pass legislation. If you were to get in the position, you've done the job that you wanted to do, and you're looking back at it, what does it look like? Why should we vote for Charles Bookwalter?
Okay. Well, I'm going to try to answer that, but I'm probably not going to be very effective at it. But I just want to make some observations here, that it's not just young people that think this way, okay? I have been, what is it, Margaret? How many fairs and parades have we done?
27.
27. Speaking with non-agenarians, that's a 90-year-old, octogenarians, 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds. And today, I spoke with someone in this room, a friend of mine, who said the same thing, that they're not prepared to invest in their business, they are not prepared to buy a home, they don't know what the future is for them. So this isn't just a young generation thing. That 90-year-old that we, I met in Frankfurt, I, every time I have an opportunity to talk to someone in an older generation, this, I ask them, is, what's it like? You know, you saw the '70s Depression, you were the '60s, the '80s, like, all this. You've seen all of it. What's your opinion of what we are, where we are right now? It's the worst I've ever seen it, is what they, every single one. It's the worst I've ever seen it. And these 20-year-olds are saying the same thing. So we're all in this together, everybody. You can't invest in your own business, because you don't know what it's going to be like. You don't know what interest rates are going to be like, because for 20 years, they're artificially suppressed them. Then they jack them up, and they talk about, you know, what their intent of the interest rates are, and you don't know. There's so much uncertainty for everybody. So, you know, young people can't buy homes. They don't even know if they're going to be able to afford a home. And this is all due to these, this out-of-control spending, this out-of-control government. So to talk about what, to look in the hindsight, if I look back, you know, gosh, it would be, you know, to have a world where we have love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, and self-control. The fruits of the Spirit. I didn't say that. That's the ideal world. And that's what we need to come to. You know, that's why we don't attack people personally. That's why we attack policies. That's why Christians need to get engaged. That's why we need to elect moral people to represent us. And if they fail us, then you don't reelect them. You run against them. You run for precinct committeemen. We stop letting them caucus. Forty percent of Indiana representatives are caucused in. We don't even elect them. 60% of precinct committeemen are appointed by the chair of the party. We have lost control of our government completely. So that actually is where I'd like to see, looking back. I'd like to see Indiana, I would like to see Indiana in control, the party, the government of Indiana, in the control of the people. Where the chairs aren't appointing precinct committeemen, where every single precinct committeeman is an elected position, that's an eager patriot that wants to serve their country, where 40% of our elected, this nonsense of them running to resign, so that they can just appoint another person, their person, that is, we should be so offended with that. And so that's where I'd like to see, Indiana in a better spot. And why am I, I am running for a federal office to protect, what Jesse said, is to protect us from this, to protect the state from federal overreach. So that would be a better-looking Indiana, with the love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, and self-control.
Thank you, Premier Arms, for having us tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Charles, if anybody wants to learn more about you or donate to your campaign and your efforts, how can they do so?
BookwalterforCongress.com is the website. I'll also plug a couple more things, just because you all might like it. So one, we've got some Make Honey Great Again over here. I think I've got a few of them. Those are $20. It's just a little, just a little, what do they call, kitsch kind of things? It's in the shape of Donald Trump, in a mold of Donald Trump. See that? It's in the, yeah, it's in, yeah, it's in the mold of, it's not Aunt Jemima. That's probably illegal. It's in the mold of Donald Trump. It's not my honey. It's another honey. Another thing, but please go to my website at BookwalterforCongress.com. If you would like to contribute, you could do it. You could mail a check. There's a P.O. box on there, or there's a donate button. Here's another thing. I was contacted by the Trump State Campaign Chair, and they said that he's, he said that he's struggling to get signatures for Trump in the 4th Congressional District. I was just made aware of that. So I brought some petitions here. And they, he could use our help. So if you want to even see, President Trump is going to win Indiana, everybody, okay? President Trump is going to be the nominee. So I would not, I would really not like to see the 4th District not come through with signatures for President Trump. So if you're inclined to do so, you can come up and sign your name. And there, and make sure, if you're from different counties, you only sign your county sheet. That's the way it works. So that's how, thank you, Casey, so much for doing this tonight, and going out of your way, and Guy, for coming down here. It's so great to, you know, do this with you and have your expertise here. And all of you. I'm so grateful for all of you coming out tonight. It almost offends me when people, they just talk about elected officials. It's you, it's the truck drivers, it's the small business owners, it's the people who go to work every day. That's who are the important people that come out here and show up tonight. Thank you all for coming.
Hey, Charles, you might want to jump in real quick and add that you're going to continue doing town hall meetings, virtual town hall meetings, every Thursday night online, correct?
We're going to do them every Thursday. Well, that might be up for debate. But we are going to do virtual town hall meetings. So you can follow us on Facebook, BookwalterforCongress.com. Follow us on Twitter at @TCBookwalter. And if we do have these town, these virtual town hall meetings, it's easy. You're at home. You can jump on. You can ask questions. And invite 10 of your friends, everybody. Hello. My name's Charles Bookwalter, and I'm running in the 4th Congressional District to represent you. Jim Baird claims that he wants to cut wasteful federal spending, the same claims he made in 20... in 2018. Well, he's had six years to do that, so let's check out the record. My name's Charles Bookwalter, and I need your vote on May 7th in the primary. Please check out BookwalterforCongress.com. Thank you.